Let's call this regular session of the Ketchikan City Council to order. Please call them all.
Bergeron.
Present.
Coos.
Here.
Harris.
Present.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Wes.
Here.
Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
In the first, in our business, we have three public hearings. First public hearings on order and that's thirteen seventeen twenty-five amending the Chapter eleven twelve of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Telecommunications Services and Rights. Is there anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that public hearing. Our next public hearing is on Resolution thirteen twenty-five fourteen amending the two thousand thirteen General Government Annual Budget for Department by thirty thousand. That's a grant. Is there anybody here to speak to that? CNN will bring us down to our third and final public hearing. This is on Resolution thirteen twenty-five fifteen amending the two thousand thirteen Ketchikan Public Utilities Annual Budget, Telecommunications Customer Service Department, forty thousand. I believe that's another grant. Anybody here to speak to those items? CNN will close that public hearing and bring us down to Communications. I haven't gone through them, but it looks good. That brings us down to persons to be heard. And we'll start off with Terry Lieberman.
Thank you.
Hey Terry.
Thank you. I have a concern, and I wish to express it with each of you, and it's a time crunch. I know that you're going to be discussing later in the hatchery, and whatever that's going to be, and what it is. But the time crunch that I think that we need to give attention to and a priority is keeping the salmon in the crick. And that means we're going to have to stock the crick if you want to keep them. My suggestion is to you, the city contacts Sarah, and see what you can do to arrange to have the crick stocked. What the fish come back about every two years. So what's out in twelve is back in fourteen. Thirteen is in fifteen. You're sixteen, what are we going to have? Are we going to have fish in the crick or not? So I'm urging you and asking you to say, meet with Sarah. They don't meet, what I understand, until in October. But that's only a couple of months away. I think it deserves a discussion. It's going to be part of your discussion probably in the future. But I would like to urge you, keep the salmon in the crick. Do what you can. If you can use the cruise passenger vessel funds at all towards this for one year or a couple of years, so be it. If there are other ways to get the funds to do it. But I think the fish in that salmon, the salmon in that crick is the best marketing and promotional tool we've got for the salmon industry and for the tourists. They go over there and they love to see the live fish. I think it's a fantastic thing. It's an asset to the community, and I don't want to see us lose it. And that's my pitch.
Thanks Terry.
Thank you.
CNN, thank you very much. We'll talk about it tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us down to Ken. Come on up. What's new out at the Medical Center?
Good evening. Mayor Williams, City Manager Amalon, and members of the City Council. You all know me as Ken Tangis, the Chief Financial Officer at Ketchikan Medical Center. I'm here this evening, though, to introduce myself as Ken Tangis, the interim administrator for the hospital. As many of you probably read in the daily news, I've been chosen as the replacement for Pat Branko. His last day is August thirteenth. I have expressed interest in the permanent position. Peace Health will be conducting a nationwide search for the replacement. We anticipate that to last about six months or until the end of the year. And I wanted to extend an invitation to any and all council members. If you'd like to discuss any issue related to Ketchikan Medical Center, I will make myself available to you to discuss such things. You can just call the hospital and ask for me, or ask for my assistant, Lyndy Bachhorst. That was all I wanted to say this evening.
Any questions for Ken?
Yeah, thanks for coming up, Ken.
You bet.
I'm going to take you up on your offer.
Okay.
And the thing that I'm going to be coming up and talking to you about is, there's a couple of things. You know, a lot of people in the community are wishing that Peace Health had more skin in the game when we're talking about the capital improvement, so I want to kind of talk to you about that. And so, it's always good to let you know what I'm thinking about. The other thing I was going to talk about was the programming on the build out of the library, of the hospital. And, you know, there's a real need in the community for a drug treatment center, and then there's also one for detox. And I don't think that that is really being addressed right now, either through you guys or through...
Akila.
Akila.
Yeah.
And so, I want to talk about that.
You bet.
You know, I want to make that happen. I want to find out who among us or how we can pull this off, because that facility is needed, and the programming should include that. And if we're putting up all of this money, we should have a voice about what the programming is going to be.
Right.
Okay?
Okay. Could I respond to that?
Sure.
I don't disagree. Our community needs assessment will actually address that need, where we went out and interviewed people in the community and identified that as a need. Remember, the facility master plan is addressed, initially Phase One is the surgery suites and clinical office buildings. So in Phases Two, Three, and Four, that currently isn't programmed, but we can look at strategies about addressing that need in our community. You bet. Jan?
I just wanted to make you aware of a conversation that I would have with you regarding an urgent care portion at the hospital. And I've talked with Mr. Branko in the past, and Dr. Rice and whatnot, but it never seems to go past the talking point. And as an insurance agent, I get a lot of feedback from clients who tell me that, you know, I mean, ear infections, things like that happen at the worst time of day, and they're paying, you know, twelve hundred dollars to walk through the door of an emergency room for something that's not truly an emergency. And I think it's a real disservice to our community to have them exposed to those type of expenses. I know Sitka has incorporated an urgent care center into their facility, so it's obviously doable even on a small scale. And I think that really, the community would be well-served with something of that nature.
I'd be happy to discuss that with you, absolutely. Okay, anything else? Ken, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks Ken.
That brings us down to Barbara Morgan.
Hello. I am representing Oceans Alaska, and I would like to thank the City Council and the Borough Mayor, the City Mayor, excuse me, for hearing me. I just wanted to take just a minute to let you know kind of where we're at. We've been working towards providing the mariculture industry with seed, both oyster seed and gooey duck seed, and we have found that that need has not decreased at all. And so we're going to be pushing forward on continuing that. We are working to secure funding to build a larger building south of town on our Herring Cove property, because as we get in this and do this more, we've been finding out that the need is much greater than even just southeast Alaska or Alaska. It's all the way down the coast to southern California that needs seed. And if we really want to be able to do what our mission states we want to do, we need to have a larger building in order to do that. So we're kind of moving forward on that, pushing forward on it. And the industry support is really huge for what we're doing. We have a lot of orders for seed. We have a lot of letters of support from growers and on up to different economic organizations in the community, in the region. So I just kind of want to let you guys know that. I'm not going to take a lot of your time, you guys have a whole board meeting, or yeah, council meeting, so I see what...
We got a question, Jan.
Renee Schofield posted an article online, and I don't know where it originated from, about the Spokelys and seed production. And I guess I'm a little confused between what they're trying to accomplish at at their facility and what Oceans Alaska is trying to accomplish, and are the two competing against each other? Is it...
I am not clear on all of what they are doing, and to tell you the truth, we're not going to be out there very much longer, because what we're finding is it's hard for us to keep anything alive in the water from Ward Cove, and we're moving soon. And so I don't know...
But they're in, they're taking on a separate...
Right. And so if they are successful, if they put together basically what we're doing, and they're successful at it, the need is so great, actually, that we will not be competing, we'll both just be helping provide seed for the market. The ocean acidification issues that are happening in Puget Sound are ongoing, they're continuing, they're not stopping, there's no...
Ocean what?
Ocean acidification issues. The big natural upwellings of water that come up off the coast of Oregon are pulling up deep, much more acidic water into Puget Sound. And the lowest recorded pH of the ocean in the world is recorded in Puget Sound, and they, the big hatcheries down there pull that water in, and it can cause mass die-off of everything they have in the building. So, and they're trying to pull water only during the times of day when the water's okay, but that's not always successful. So that's really harming the seed production industry in Puget Sound, which is where the hub is right now. And so that's why we're doing this up here. There's three companies in Puget Sound that have been supplying the industry. If we're successful and the Spokelys are successful, there's still likely going to be room for even more industry to be producing seed, as far as what I can see right now. So, so no, I don't see a competition really. The need is really huge.
Are they going to move up here?
They might. If they continue having these problems, we don't have those big natural upwellings of acidic water, or more acidic water, and that's not stopping there. And it's just likely to get worse, actually. All I read about ocean acidification, it's likely to get worse. And a meeting I was at in January talked about the seed crisis that the Pacific Coast Shellfish Growers Association put on. Bill Taylor, Taylor Shellfish, which is one of those three top producers, was talking about expanding, not necessarily here, but expanding out of Puget Sound. They're looking for other places to go, and it's possible they could potentially come up here. I don't know. I, you know, that's kind of a guess on my part, but I think it would be smart of them, because we have really good water quality up here. So, any more questions about what our plans are?
Thank you very much.
I mean, some information in front of each of you about what our plan is and what the impact of that plan could be on the regional and local economy.
Thank you. Do you want to follow up on that?
Good evening, Assemblymembers and staff and mayor. My name is Tom Henderson. I'm with Oceans Alaska, the Mariculture Director, and temporary, now for a year, General Manager as well. There are two questions I'd like to follow up on just really briefly. Some of that information that Barb handed out suggests, at the very end, my big starry-eyed dream that someday some of these folks like Taylor will put a five hundred million, five hundred million seed, or five billion seed hatchery over here on Ravina. That's my big vision, because what they're doing is kind of going to Hawaii, doing some things out in Hawaii, and truthfully, I think it'd be a lot easier for them to come to this area rather than go to Hawaii. Lot of logistical factors, operating, you know, three or four, five times zones away. And utilities here, electricity is so much cheaper here than it is in Hawaii. It's about a third of what they would pay for operating in Hawaii. So, I don't think it's out of the question at all to see a large-scale facility here You are, I'm sure, aware that the Borough has agreed to support Oceans Alaska for a couple of years' operation out of the Economic Development Fund. What that's going to do is keep us in the water and operating, providing seed for the next couple of years, until we can get a permanent facility. Without that additional funding, that bigger facility will never happen. We need the money to get there, to where we can really address the seed situation. Part of our plan is also to come to the city, be asking for some operating funds as well. And we'll be in contact with the city offices in the future with that. We have a little incident happened today, which is just kind of a continuing saga of a long story, long sad story of where we are in this shellfish industry, and why we need to have a hatchery down here in southeast. Now, there is a, the Seward Hatchery up in Seward, the alluded Pride Shellfish Hatchery in Seward, has produced a small amount of gooey duck seed over the years. Some of the local growers have some gooey duck seed here in town, out at our facility right now. They flew to Anchorage, drove to Seward, and carried that seed back down here, and we have it, and we're going out, growing it out, and we'll keep it for a few more weeks before they plant it out. And then today, I got an email message saying, there's some gooey duck seed coming down. Here's the air bill number. Didn't say when it's arriving, didn't say anything else, just here's the air bill number. So we go on the Alaska Airlines website, try to find out where that seed is, when is it arriving here in Ketchikan. Well, there's no record of it on the website. I can't call Alaska Airlines, because there's no record of it. They don't know anything about that number. So I did manage to get ahold of the daughter of the guy who sent that seed down here. And this is a seed that belongs, this particular seed belongs to some guys up in Juneau who want to do the same thing. They want us to grow it out for them, and then they'll pay us for our time and energy that goes into it. So anyway, I find that, yes, she did take the seed to the airport, and it was an old air bill number, so Alaska Airlines gave him a new air bill number. She didn't know what it was. It was at home, but the seed was already here. Now, this was at five o'clock I was talking to her. She said, oh yeah, the seed arrived at eight o'clock this morning. Well, as you know, by five o'clock, I can't go to the airport to pick it up. I can't get it till tomorrow morning. I don't know how many seeds there are. If there's fifty thousand seed at ten cents a piece, that's five thousand dollars a seed, I wouldn't be a bit surprised if it's a hundred percent loss to the growers tomorrow. I wouldn't be one bit surprised. That's just the kind of thing that's happened so many times over the years. Been a lot of seeds sent down here, been a lot of problems along the way. This isn't the sort of thing, it's not a, it's not a part that gets way late and you lose fishing time. That's bad enough. This is the part that just dies and disappears. You lose your, you lose everything that goes into it. So, it's real important that we have a facility right here in Ketchikan that can serve all of southeast and the rest of Alaska, as well as people outside. And lastly, having a facility here, you know, surviving long enough, build this facility is not the major goal. The real goal is to build an industry. Build an industry that's going to be in Ketchikan, it's going to be around Ketchikan, it's going to be southern southeast, northern southeast, and Ketchikan will be kind of the center of it. You know, Ketchikan's already a center for, a service center for all of the outlying communities over here. And we'll become the center of the shellfish industry for Alaska if we have something to ship out of here.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Have you ever considered doing a co-op of some type, and having the people that need the seed, you know, supporting the facility?
We have considered a co-op. You know, co-ops work in some areas. The Sea and Sound Seafood Co-op is an example of a co-op that really works. People who had permits, they had money, they had cash flow, they got together, the co-op up there in Sitka, and it seems to be one of the more successful co-ops in the state. Right now, we're looking at a very small industry. It's all mom-and-pop industry. There's no corporate backing, there's no big money backing on any, but it's all mom-and-pop, and it's all pretty low, low-scale. We need to build that industry up to where, the point where people have the money to invest in a hatchery. Right now, my opinion is that they're not even adequately invested in their farms yet. I've had a farm for fifteen, twenty years now, open cake. It's inadequately capitalized, largely because I don't know what a well-capitalized farm should look like. So I did a lot of things wrong in a lot of different directions, when I should have capitalized on some equipment to make things easier for myself. And, you know, in the end, I'd still be here, because I would have been out of sea two years ago with no, with no hopes of getting any. And so, somewhere down the road, a co-op could work, but we need to have an industry largely that supports a co-op first.
I guess, you know, it's kind of similar to the remark Sam made about the hospital, about putting some skin in the game. And, you know, fishermen invest in their fishing boats and equipment and all that type of stuff. And I guess, one of the things I think about is the people that have these farms or are harvesting it and then selling these and making money and supporting their families and whatnot. You know, there should be some buy-in or some support back, you know, to make, you know, put some skin in the game, to make them, you know, I don't want to say accountable, but to, you know, to bring it all together.
Every...
And I think just the government on its own, supporting these kind of things, I mean, it's good for economic development and whatnot, but I, I, I mean, like my business, you know, I have to, I have to support it, you know, to get my, keep my employees there and whatnot. And I just kind of feel like along this endeavor too, it would make me more comfortable if I saw, you know, some people putting back into it.
I think every grower has a lot of skin in the game. I have about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of my skin invested in the game.
Well, in your individual farming, but not in this seed endeavor.
Right. And even if you look at the salmon fishing industry today, fishermen have their boats and they're here, but they did not, they were not the ones who originated the salmon hatcheries, which has really stabilized the industry today. That was the state that put up a lot of money for the first hatcheries. I don't know how many millions came into Fred Division, the Fisheries Rehabilitation Enhancement Division. The state spent a lot of money to prop this up and get it to where it is today. It took a lot of state money to get us there. And still today, the state has ongoing loan programs with, which all regional hatcheries can draw on to support those hatcheries. Right now, you know, and that started when there was already a good, solid, basic fishing industry. Today, there is not a good, solid, basic shellfish industry. There's an industry that's struggling, trying to get started, but it's nowhere close to where the salmon industry was back in nineteen seventy-two, when the B and D Hatchery Act was first passed. As far as supporting what we're doing, growers are supporting us in paying a pretty high price for the seed. It's much higher than the list price for similar seed elsewhere. Now, the fact is, there is no seed available, but there's still a list price, and they're willing to pay for it. They're also willing to put down a thirty percent deposit on their order. So I've been sitting on money since February from growers who are supporting the ongoing operation, basically, with that deposit. So I, I think that growers do have a lot of skin in the game in their own personal farms. They are trying to support us, but they are not a strong industry that's going to come up with a million dollars or two million dollars to build a hatchery. It's not going to happen right now. Even the, even the gooey duck growers who have kind of visions of some pretty significant money, I mean, if you look at what a hundred thousand gooey ducks might be worth, it's a lot of money. And even they don't have the cash to put up, you know, two million dollars today for a hatchery. Mariculture around the world at this latitude is real successful, and at more southern latitudes. Everywhere you go in the world where you find money being made on mariculture, whether it's, you know, a half-billion-dollar industry in New Zealand, whether it's in Thailand or Finland, or, you know, all the east coast of Canada, Japan, everywhere you go, it's taken a lot of input from outside the industry to make it work. It's taken a lot of research, it's taken a lot of government money. You use government, public lands, in almost all cases, public lands, public waters. It's taken a lot of research, a lot of public input to make these things work. And now, I don't know what the value of cultured seafood is around the world, but it's way, way, way into the billions. And it's all started with a lot of input to get it, to get it there. You can't take your technology and simply transfer it from one place to another. It's not a cheap thing to do. We can't even take technology from Puget Sound and transplant it here. It doesn't work. What we find is oysters, for instance, that grow the best in Prince William Sound, grow poor down in Puget Sound, and vice versa. So there's a lot of development work that has to be done, which is one reason why we need to be doing here, do that development work here. But it's also why you always end up with some government support to get mariculture going. And that's, that is the case around the world, but it does pay off.
Any other questions for Tom? Nick?
Yeah, Tom, I get the impression you're going to come back and ask us for some operating money, and I, I guess when you come back, you know, to me, when Oceans Alaska started, it was something completely different. I need to know who you are and what you are and what you're planning when you come back, and also a business plan to show where we're headed, because right now, it's just illusion out there, and you want to go do something. We need more, I need more information to back up the decisions.
You're in luck. We have put in a lot of time on our business plan, and part of the fund, funding from the Borough is fifty thousand dollars, which is, goes in two directions. One of it, one direction is to put together a basic design of a facility, and some of that fifty thousand dollars will go to finalize the business plan, put into a book, something that we can take to the legislature, something with some pictures in it that they can look at and graph, you know, something that has not only all the basic information, but also something they can flip through and get some information out. So we do have the business plan, and we have used it, presented it to the Borough, and we will bring it in to you along with additional information.
One big question. So Tom, your business plan, I imagine you have some of that put together now, or is it all together?
It's probably ninety percent, it just needs to be...
Sure. So my question is, is that you're expecting this operation to be really successful, generate a lot of cash, and go on forever?
I expect it to go on forever. One thing about hatcheries, shellfish hatcheries, they can support themselves, but it's not going to make a lot of money. In fact, when I started looking at this a year or two ago, I started working it out and using our local utility rates, and I do that because electricity, the huge, energy is a huge part of it. It's energy and manpower, the two biggest inputs into a hatchery. And I start working through my numbers there, and I go, jeez, it looks like you can make money doing this. I'm thinking, that, how can that be? Because everything I've heard says that hatcheries are a loser. That's why you don't see hatcheries all over the place. There's three major hatcheries in the North Pacific, northwest coast area. Three major hatcheries. And they're all connected to vertically-integrated organizations, because the hatcheries themselves don't make them any money. Those three hatcheries have been very helpful to all the growers throughout Washington, BC, and Alaska in supplying seed. The Canadians have been hit the same as we have, and they've looked at, should we build a hatchery, or should we not? And I have a report that says, it doesn't work. You can't, you can't build a hatchery, and it doesn't make money. And so, when I begin to put these numbers together and see that it does better than break even, you know, I've kind of got a little more serious about it, and, you know, tried to be very, very conservative with all the numbers we've put into it. Now, I, do we need seven people or eight? Well, let's say eight people. You're like, you know, you probably end up needing that many. How about the cost of power? Well, we know what the cost is. How much do we need? So, you know, I tried to be very, very conservative in putting all these numbers together, and it still looks like it does slightly better than break even. Now, whether it's something that would make, you know, a return on investment good enough to attract a lot of investment, I don't think so. It's not going to return thirty percent or fifty percent. It might return ten or twenty percent, though, which, you know, will hopefully be enough to cover unforeseen contingencies, and maybe put a little bit of money aside, because like any other farming enterprise or hatchery enterprise, you're going to have years where you're not going to make them. One of the advantages some of the salmon hatchery organizations have is they have multiple species, and they have multiple hatcheries. I used to run the biggest salmon hatchery up in the world, Prince William Sound. We had a complete pink salmon run one year. Well, that was bad for us, but one of our hatcheries within the system had a great pink salmon run that year. And that helped fund our operation that year. And the same thing has happened with northern southeast out of Sitka. I don't know so much about Sarah, but I know there's been times when there's been chum failures at one hatchery. The other hatchery over on the other side of the island has a good chum return, the organization survives, and they make money and cover the costs. Shellfish hatchery, shellfish hatcheries also occasionally have serious problems, and if you only have one location, you're going to have years when, you know, you're not going to make any money. And, you know, you may, maybe you only sell half of what you anticipate. That's bound to happen. But overall, I, I think it's, I think with this location and our, our cost of doing business here, I think it can be a continuous supply of seed at a reasonable cost.
Thank you very much, Tom. Bill Rottecky, welcome. Assemblyman.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm not here speaking for the assembly, but I am speaking for... Yeah, I'm, excuse me, I'm not here speaking for the assembly, but I am speaking for this same project which the assembly supported. And, uh, um, I think I can say that every member of the assembly is very supportive of the opportunity in mariculture industry. The question is, when, who, how? And this is probably, I don't know, certainly not all of the letters of support that, uh, I'm sorry, Bill Rottecky, three five nine, Bunch Prairie Lane, um, thank you, council members, staff, manager, mayor, people, for allowing me to speak. Uh, quite a variety of, of support. Um, I'll just go through a couple. Here's one from A F D F. I don't know if you know who they are. They're a group of, it's Alaska Fisherman's Development Foundation, processors, fishermen, statewide organization. They're in support. I seem to have neglected to bring a letter from, uh, our local U.A. Southeast Ketchikan Campus Director. Here's a letter from a habitat biologist working for, uh, National Marine Fisheries. Here is a, a letter of support from a local business person in Ketchikan. Here's a letter of support, um, let's see, from someone who I don't know who they are, Alan Butner. There is a number of letters, are a number of letters from, uh, shellfish and gooey duck growers, and I think an indication of their support is that, I believe, Tom said they have something like ten orders, represents almost thirty growers. It's probably every grower there is in Alaska. One of the things that, you know, we could look at as, as this opportunity is, um, really the industry here. It's, this is nothing to do with Ocean's Alaska. It has nothing to do with getting a hatchery. This has to do with getting a huge industry in southeast that really fits, where we have fresh water, where you have remote villages, you know, or residences, where people who are good at this kind of thing already, and it really does fit. And is the time now or later, I think the time is now. I mean, some of these letters, people are saying, you know, if it doesn't happen now, we're looking at another ten years. And that's really what happened in New Zealand, too. They faltered and faltered and faltered, and finally, the government said, okay, we're going to contribute. And, uh, that's when it started to take off. I think it was ten or more years before it took off in New Zealand. And as Tom mentioned, there's no industry, there's no mariculture industry, shellfish mariculture, in the world that started by itself. Every one of them started with government support. But, I don't know how much government support there was, you know, their salmon industry started with a hundred, hatcheries started with a hundred million bucks, and then the three percent tax, which was actually a tax on a publicly owned resource. The people of the state of Alaska own those fish. Think about that. You know, fishermen, I was a fisherman, think of taxes on ourselves, but actually, the state owned those fish, not me, even though I thought they were mine. But, um, here's one from the Alaska Sea Grant, Alaska Marine Advisor Program. Here's a letter from, some of you guys probably know, a guy named Trevor Sandy, who said, you know, this doesn't happen. He's going to quit trying to do the oyster thing. Other growers, Blue Star Oyster Company, uh, Alaskan Half, what's it called, Alaskan Half Shell Oyster Company, Juno Economic Development Council, letter of support. Um, there was also a letter that came after the Borough decided to fund Ocean's, uh, operating cost and the small grant for developing the, uh, schematic design and materials to take to the legislature this coming year. Um, here's a letter from, I can read part of this, from Trident Seafoods, John Skoblick. Trident Seafoods in Ketchikan does support the concept of Ketchikan Gateway Borough. These are all letters, of course, to the Borough, not to the city council, but, uh, and the fifty thousand dollar design grant. Trident Seafoods is one of the largest processors of sea cucumbers and gooey ducks in southeast, and is very interested in being more involved with other processing opportunities of other shellfish products. Trident Seafood sees Ocean's Alaska as being a vital part of tipping the balance to a full-blown shellfish industry in southeast Alaska, southern southeast Alaska. With Ocean's Alaska being in Ketchikan, there is a potential for hundreds of jobs being developed in the future shellfish activities. That's his opinion. John Skoblick's been in the business a long time. He believes there's hundreds of jobs. Here's one, this is kind of odd. This is from Clam Gardens of Alaska. They're one of the people, actually, I don't know this like these guys do, but I think these may be the people that have, that we hope they're not, knock on wood, but may have a bunch of dead gooey ducks in the airport. We hope they survive. Um, let's see, Peter Metcalf, Clam Gardens of Alaska, uh, as I detail below my own experiences, it has been painfully obvious to me that for a mariculture industry to grow and thrive in southern Alaska, a shellfish hatchery must be based in our region. And he goes on to say how in Puget Sound, where the gooey duck industry, they believe that two hours is a good time in transit. We're talking eighteen to twenty-four hours from Seward to here. State law such that we can't import from down south. And even if we could, we need independence. I mean, relying on, you know, the oyster growers were relying on Puget Sound. They said, well, okay, we're having problems growing, and besides, we want to grow industry, so we're going to keep all we have anyway. We'll sell you stuff that you can't really use. Um, and, uh, there was a letter from Tongas Federal Credit Union. Maybe I mentioned that already. Anyway, this is an indication of support. I hope that either, you know, Ocean's Alaska gives you a proposal requesting for additional funds, um, or one of your council members puts it on the agenda on a meeting very soon, and you consider it seriously. I think, though, the consequence of that is that, you know, I, I can't really speak, but I'm estimating that, that, you know, Ocean's Alaska will produce seed with the Borough grant, but there'll be a lot of growers that'll be shorted, which means the industry will still be stultified in southern southeast and southeast. The goal is a large industry. I don't know how long it'll, soon. I'm sure it'll happen. It'll happen in southeast, sooner or later. It's going to happen. Uh, but, uh, I would rather see it sooner when I'm alive, and it will actually be a lot bigger than our current salmon industry, you know, estimated. About a hundred and twenty million was it bucks last year, and, uh, um, I think in, uh, New Zealand, which has less shoreline, uh, the shellfish portion, principally one species, the shellfish portion was something like, I don't know, maybe it was two, three hundred million bucks worth of an industry per year. So it's an investment. It's not, uh, really a business. I want, I guess I want to speak a little bit to the concern, which I've had too, is, you know, can private enterprise do this? Why should we give public money to this nonprofit when private enterprise can do it? Well, um, they're not. You know, they've had a lot of years, and even, you know, Elitick Pride has been getting state funds for over ten years, twelve years, whatever. It's not happening, and I think, uh, we have a resource right now where people are doing it, they are producing seed, and I think the timing is right. And thank you very much for listening to me.
Any questions for Bill? Bill, thank you very much.
Very good.
All right, that's the last person on the list, so is there anybody here that wants to address the council that isn't signed up to speak? Seeing that, and then we'll move on into the consent agenda. Um, on the consent agenda, I saw only two items I thought we could move over there, which was seven A three and seven A four. Unless somebody has something else they'd like to add.
I would like to pull five A three and talk.
Five A three?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill make the motions for that, and we'll just talk, we'll prove everything, and then do a separate motion for that. Okay, Matt?
I understand I wasn't here last meeting, but I saw that, um, our Forest Service Resolution was back on here, and I'm a little confused. Can we still make changes to that?
No. Basically, it was approved, but it was not in a, the format, in resolution format. So with some discussion with Katie, we decided we should have it, so everybody could review what was sent up. The deadline was June thirtieth, so it was, uh, sent to all the persons that were CC'd on that letter, the Forest Service.
Anybody else? All right, um, we'll add, uh, seven A three and seven A four. Do we have a motion to consent?
Move to consent.
Um, Adam Turkey, will we do him?
Should I read three?
Yeah, read them all.
Read them all. Okay, then we'll just do that separately. Okay, approval of the minutes, regular meeting of June twentieth, two thousand thirteen, one-year renewal of contract number twelve forty-four, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen agreement for lobbying, lobbying services, Ray Madaschowski and Associates, exempting the procurement of a firehouse annual software maintenance agreement from competitive bidding, ACS. Ordinance number thirteen seventeen twenty-five, amending chapter eleven point twelve telecommunications service and rate, second reading. Resolution number thirteen twenty-five fifteen, amending the two thousand thirteen Ketchikan Public Utilities Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation, sales, marketing, and customer service, forty thousand dollars, exempting the procurement of brocade, annual maintenance and support from competitive bidding written quotation requirements, exempting the procurement of BroadSoft annual maintenance and support from competitive bidding written quotation requirements. Resolution number thirteen twenty-five thirteen, USFS four, uh, five-year review of its two thousand eight Tongas Land Resource Management Plan, Councilmember Kuss. Resolution number thirteen twenty-five fourteen, approving the two thousand thirteen general government budget supplemental appropriation for the Fire Department in the amount thirty thousand. Change order number one, final to the public improvements contract for installation of a double bowler at berth three pool engineering eek.
All right, uh, we'll vote on everything but three, um, which is the exemption for the firehouse software. Um, call a roll on everything else, please.
Harris?
Hi.
Kuss?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Hey, that passes unanimously. That brings us down to three. Dick, can you read the
motion?
Motion, I move to approve.
Yeah, it's five B three, percent two.
I'm not too sure I want to approve. You know, I'll read, I'll read the motion.
Five A three.
Yeah, five A.
Five, it's five A three, okay.
Oh, am I on the wrong one?
No, that's the right one.
Okay, there we go.
Pursuant to paragraph, sub-paragraph six of section three point twelve point oh five oh A of the Ketchikan Divisal Code, I move the City Council exempt the procurement of three, of a three-year firehouse software annual maintenance agreement at a cost of eleven thousand four hundred and nine dollars from ACS of Urban Dale, Iowa, authorizing funding from the Fire Department's two thousand thirteen software maintenance services account. Account number six three five dash twelve, and direct the City Manager to execute the contract. Talk to somebody at the City Council.
We have a second. Moved in second. Dick, it's all yours.
Okay, uh, well, my problem is, is I read this. The reason for doing this is that we lost the database that the Fire Department has on one of our servers. That means there's another server. It's that doctor, I'm pretty sure there is. So why would we go out and hire somebody else and put it on their server when we have another server we can put it on? And I'd like to have IT's input on this. I don't want just our input on it. So I guess you can explain it to me, but right now, I'm not going to support it.
Frank Scherr, Fire Chief. Um, we actually pay Firehouse for an annual maintenance of about three thousand dollars a year right now. And for that, we keep it on our server. We have to maintain it on our server. Curtis from IT has been thoroughly involved in this, um, and would like to see us proceed forward with this. Basically, what happens is, is you're seeing in technology, everything's migrating to the cloud. This will allow us to look at making billing easier for the customers, for all the seasonals out there, integrating in-cap dispatching a lot cheaper in the future. But we currently pay three thousand dollars a year to Firehouse for an annual maintenance. We're looking at thirty-eight hundred dollars a year to go to the cloud, and we don't have to worry about IT spending exorbitant amounts of time in keeping stuff on our servers. So it, it's an eight hundred dollar increase, but in the terms of salaries and staff time, you're probably saving a few thousand dollars a year making this move.
And my, I guess my comment is, is that you should have made it clear that it's only an eight hundred dollar increase. So the appearance, the appearance is that it's a thirty-eight hundred dollar increase, and our servers can't handle it.
Frank, can our servers handle it?
Uh, we've been storing it on our servers for a while, and like I said, we had one, one issue there where everything was on the same server when it went down, and we did have to recover all that information. And really what this is, is our reporting software that we use for the state, we use for our ambulance billing, and migrating everything into this cloud is going to make all that a lot easier. Right now, you know, we have issues dealing with the server. It takes a lot of staff time to start setting up the different portals, where Firehouse takes care of all that for you now.
Anybody else have a question? Bob?
Yeah, I happened to be in IT today, just visiting a little bit, and they had, they showed me their backup data servers and stuff that they have, and they're all automated. They have two spares sitting there. If one crashes, it automatically transfers to the other. And we presently have one that's at, uh, I don't know, five terabytes, and we're going to upgrade, I think, next year or so to a ten terabyte operation. So I think hardware-wise, we probably have it. Now, I don't know what IT has to do to work with the Firehouse software within our, our data process, but I think that memory-wise or storage-wise, we probably have the capability.
Yeah, I would agree. It's a matter of every time that there's an update necessary, they have, IT has to get with them. Again, I'm not a, a big IT guy when it comes to that, but Curtis has been involved heavily with Greg Karlik setting this up, and both those guys would like to see us migrate to this cloud-based.
Anybody else? Dick?
One last question. I don't, Curtis doesn't seem to be here. I, how reliable is the cloud? And none of us are IT experts.
Well, it works good for my council pocket.
Okay, Bob has a question.
Carl, can we have IT come back with an analysis of this?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest that if the council wants to defer this item, we certainly can get the input of IT. Again, if either the chief or I had been approached with questions before tonight's meeting, maybe we could have had the answers for you this evening.
Our database is actually kind of sitting in limbo right now, so we've got a lot of records sitting out there, but...
Dan?
I just think that, um, more and more and more, technology is going to the clouds. I mean, the more that we have manual axle boxes of technology sitting around, um, overheating and having things spill, I mean, that's hypothetical. I mean, when it's in the cloud, um, okay, everything that I, I know from my little office setup is that's where they're pointing me as well. Um, I think it's kind of inevitable, and I think in the end, it probably will be a cost-saving measure, because we're not going to have to be replacing components and things that burn out and overheat and break and that type of thing, so.
And what I can tell you, and I don't know what the, what the total end cost was for that crash, but what I can tell you is, if, if they have an issue with their server, it's their responsibility to recover that information, not ours. If we have an issue, it becomes our responsibility, and to get that back is fairly expensive.
That is a significant cost.
All right, yeah.
I, I, I don't see the point in putting this off. I'm ready to vote on it, and vote her down.
Well, right now, the motion is to, um, approve this. Call a roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Harris?
Hi.
Severson?
No.
Kuss?
No.
Okay, that passes five to two. That brings us down to unfinished business, which we have done. It brings us to new business. Uh, General Government A, one presentation by Gateway Borough Director of Assessments. Come on down.
Uh, Mayor, President of the City Council, Minister of the Land, Ron Brown, Director of Assessment, Ketchikan Gateway Borough. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Uh, was asked to provide a, uh, presentation to the council in regards to the efforts that the department has made in regards to the business personal tax role for the city of Ketchikan. Also have a request for a code change on behalf of myself and my department Just for beginners, almost exactly two years ago, that I was before the City Council requesting a partial exemption be granted by the city of Ketchikan for the business personal tax role. The City Council did grant that exemption, and I wanted to present to you the results of what we have done with that. That, again, that was provided, the exemption was granted in 2012. That was the first time that was applied. But since that time, especially last year, for this year's business personal tax role. Last year, what we did was, we revised and revisited the depreciation schedule for personal property. This was done by consulting business personal depreciation schedules, other boroughs and cities throughout Alaska, also taking a look at other periodicals for other depreciation schedules in the lower 48, as well as taking a look at other private sources. The Borough Assembly, I made a motion to the Borough Assembly also that they impose a $200 fee for failure to file a business personal return. That is a return that is required by state statute. Actually, the state statute allot a much steeper fee than that. Again, we did, the Borough Assembly did adopt a $200 fee for those that failed to file that mandatory return. That generated substantial results, obviously. Last year, we received 87% of the returns that were mailed out to businesses. In the past years previous to that, our average was only 50%. We had a substantial increase in the returns that we received. We also took a look at the form itself, updated the actual form, and last year was the first year where we had an actual electronic form in an Excel format that the property owner can fill out digitally. It automatically calculates depreciation, automatically calculates the subtotals, and totals out the return. Makes it much easier, much faster for the business personal return filer to file the return. That return can be then emailed to the department, and we will send them a confirmation that we have received their return. They have the return, they have spent far less time, and it, just easier for all concerned. With these changes, as far as the exemption, and of course, the business personal filing fee, the department did make substantial public service announcements, including two direct mailings to each business personal account notifying them of the changes and the non-filing fee. Those notices were also posted in the Ketchikan Daily News, Sit News, and on the local radio stations, just to make everyone aware of these changes. Also, last year, borough staff began onsite inspections of businesses, and for those businesses where we did not, we received the business personal returns back as undeliverable, we actually hand-delivered them to those businesses to make sure that they received Summation. What are the results on here? On page two, the presentation that I provided. Now, in 2011, if we treat that, again, as our base year, that is the year before any of these changes were made, so these numbers are all relative to 2011. In 2012, the $25,000 exemption had to be applied retroactive, and that was before any of these changes were made. There was a net reduction of almost 72% of the accounts that my department and my staff processed. That translated to only a 10% decrease in the business personal tax role for the city of Ketchikan. What we're doing with that $25,000 exemption is getting rid of the very, very small de minimis accounts, just as was provided in the presentation. Now, in 2013, this is the first year after we have significantly improved the number of returns we're getting, modification of the depreciation schedule. We actually had a slight increase in the number of accounts that actually had a taxable value remaining after the $25,000 exemption. We're still looking at a net reduction of two-thirds in the number of accounts that the department had to process. After the valuation and after taking into account the exemption, compared to 2011, there is a 27% increase in the city of Ketchikan's business personal tax role. What we've basically done here, it's nice to see a program actually work. We've decreased the workload on my staff and my department. We have actually increased your business personal tax role, and we have decreased the reporting requirements for a substantial number of businesses out there in the private economy. Essentially, what we're looking at here is a win-win-win all the way around. Again, it's nice to see something like this work. And again, on behalf of my department, I really want to thank you for the $25,000 exemption. Without that, none of this would have been possible. Bottom of page two, again, is the reflection of the total city of Ketchikan locally assessed valuations from 2000 to 2013. Where you really see the change, though, is on page three, on the top. As you'll note, the business personal tax role has been, had been in decline substantially, especially since the year 2007. That has been dramatically altered in this past year. That reduction in the number of accounts and the changes that we have made in this program has allowed us to do a far superior job as to what we have done in the past. And this is not unusual. As I noted in my presentation in 2011, this has been much the same experience in Anchorage and, and other departments throughout the state where a partial exemption has been Again, bottom of page three is just a simple bar chart showing the change in the number of taxable accounts and in the total assessed value, just a different view of it. In the future for 2014, insofar as who will file a business personal return, in terms of our past values, if a business in this year's tax role has less than $20,000 of business personal value, those, those accounts, we still track them even though they're below the exemption amount. They will be placed on a four-year rotating cycle, just like what we do with real property. They will get a business personal return in a rotating cycle once every four years. They will need to return, to return. Those with $20,000 or above will get an annual return. Okay? Obviously, if you open a business, you would like your business to grow, to prosper. $20,000 is what we picked as a point where, yes, you were below the $25,000 this year, but you're close enough that potentially, if your business is growing, next year you could be above $25,000. That's why we picked the $20,000 level. Then, the requested code change. In reading the code, especially in processing the business personal tax role for this year, the way it is currently written, the $25,000 exemption, I have to extend that to all accounts, whether you file the business personal tax return or not, which is logical or common sense. One of the major impetus's as to why I pursued this was to improve the filing of business personal tax returns. Just as an example, if you wish to get a senior citizen's, you have to file the required application for it. If you want a permanent fund dividend, you have to file the required permanent fund dividend application. I do not believe that it was the intent or that it is logical to extend the $25,000 exemption to those accounts that failed to file the required return. I've suggested some language on the bottom of page four that basically states, and I'm not wedded to this language, just what I'm after is the intent, is that if you wish to have the $25,000 exemption applied, that it also requires that you file a timely application. And I'm assuming that has consideration for the City Council to make that change for next year. And that is basically it. Other than saying thank you very much for the $25,000 exemption, I think we've done a good job and produced some good results with it.
Dan?
Was there a change in how businesses were to calculate the value of their personal property this year? Was there some change in how that calculation came about in terms of depreciated cost or new cost, or?
Well, no, we all started off with the new cost, okay? What did change was depreciation schedule, so far as how that was being depreciated.
So what changed, why was the change implemented, or what was the change?
In taking a look at the past depreciation schedules and then comparing the resultant values that came out of it, and then comparing that value to what those assets were actually selling for, the depreciation schedule's significantly undercutting the value of those assets. The, and then also, of course, comparing our depreciation schedule to those that are used elsewhere. Again, the business personal value is supposed to be a reflection of market value, just like when we assess a home. 100% of fair true market value is the ideal standard.
So...
The old depreciation schedule was, it was not cutting the mustard. It was not doing the job.
So we've had an old depreciation schedule for all these years, and then it changed?
Yes.
Or businesses given information about that, communicated about the change and how it was going to?
That's contained in the business personal return. We actually include, right now, we have three, and then coming up for this year, we're, we have one for furniture and fixtures, one for machinery, and then another one for...
I guess my concern was, I heard that it was quite a drastic change.
Yes, it was.
And I, I just wonder, like, in fairness, if it maybe have been implemented in a progressive manner? I mean, to, to think that you're paying for your, you know, value is this much all these years, and then to wake up the next day and have it at a value significantly different.
Well, again, it has, I'm not allowed to phase them in by Title 29, okay? I have to assess the property at fair and true market value. Now, when we put out the assessment notice, if that property owner disagrees with them, they are, just like with your home or any piece of real property, they're certainly entitled to appeal those values.
But the change in how the depreciation was calculated was brought about because the department felt like the values that they were, they were seeing on the reports were significantly under-valued what the true actual sale could have been on the, on the pipeline.
Correct, correct. And if, again, if the property owner feels that the resultant values that came out using those depreciation schedules was inappropriate, they could certainly contact us before filing, or when the assessment notice came out, they're certainly entitled to appeal that value, just as if they were to appeal real property. Our phone calls, our workload, we did not have one business personal property appeal based on value this year.
So where do you get the information for how it was calculated before versus the new calculation? I mean, is there some kind of spreadsheet, a program, I mean, who made the decision?
Oh, the depreciation schedules, where did they come from?
Yeah.
Again, we, first thing we did was compare our old depreciation schedules with those of Anchorage, Juno, Kodiak, okay, for comparison purposes. Then we also used Blue Book values from private enterprise business personal valuation programs to see what they are valuing, what their depreciation schedules they are also utilizing, and developed individual depreciation schedules for all of the equipment that we're doing. Right now, we have three. We're probably going to have five depreciation schedules coming next year. Right now, we have one for furniture and fixtures, heavy machinery, and for electronic equipment.
So, so you said Anchorage, and what were the other?
Anchorage, Juno, Kodiak were the primary ones that we consulted, got copies of all of their depreciation schedules and information.
Were our local demographics taken into consideration as well? Are you just basing the depreciation off of those?
Demographics. Well, what we're looking at is...
Our economics are, you know, I mean, what, what, something costs in Anchorage and can be sold, bought and sold for in Anchorage?
We begin with the, the, we begin with the business personal owner's original purchase price, what they actually paid for, what they paid for at local. What we're talking about is, from the depreciation schedule from that point on, is the depreciation rate as time goes on from that original purchase price.
Give me a flag pass. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one question. So if you, you advertised for all of these necessary returns on the radio, and you hand-delivered the ones that were not responsive, what excuse would you accept for somebody not filing a return? I can't think of one other than, like, you were marooned on a boat or something.
Uh, yeah, we hand-delivered them. I, this was my observation, and also the observation of my staff. I actually expected quite the opposite. Uh, you know, we had 89 accounts that we were subject to the non-filing fee, where we actually had some of them that, several of them that requested a 30-day extension to file the return and still did not file, which is a head-scratcher in itself. I, obviously, I, I had contact with several people who received the $200 non-filing fee. Quite frankly, of the, how should I put this in a politically, most of the vociferous complaints that I heard were local versus out-of-state or non-resident business owners, which was kind of interesting. But again, I, I got tired of hearing my own commercial driving to work in the morning, so far as that. I know the message was out there. We actually had letters printed up, large font, in red, that we mailed out twice. We expended considerable funds on my department's behalf to make sure that the word got out to all of those property owners that had not yet filed, as of the second time, that, yes, if you do not file, there will be a $200 fee.
Matt?
Ron, I have, first off, I did, I know I've said in the past, but you were right on with the, eliminating that first $25,000, so congratulations on that. But the other part of this is, and it's something that I'm concerned about, the boat tax was one of these. The borough had a $25 boat tax, or whatever, 25.75. The city had a 25.75, but there was nothing in the code that said they weren't supposed to stack on top of each other. It was the only tax that I, that I know of that didn't, you know, like, property taxes stack on top of each other, sales tax stacked on top of each other. So with this, with this late fee that you're proposing, are you, then a city business would be charged the $200 late fee from you, and that, from the borough, correct? And then on top of that, have to pay the additional mill rate for their $25,000 that should have been exempted? Is that, is that the intent, or is the intent that it would be $200, and it's either split or the, the revenue goes to the?
Uh, number one, okay, the $200 fee, of course, is, is already in place. If you do not file the return, and my staff has to calculate a return for you because you did not meet your obligation, that's where the $200 fee comes into place. With this on here, again, what we're looking at is, and if you, we've communicated to you that you must file this return... if you, uh, we've communicated to you that you must file this return, okay? It is a statutory requirement. You refuse to file that business return, forcing my staff to prepare a return for you. Uh, not only does that consume my staff's time, uh, and expense, uh, obviously, when we are imposing a value upon a property owner who refuses to file the appropriate paperwork, that's where blood pressures tend to rise. Okay, so that's where we get most of our appeals. Uh, again, I just, uh, you would, uh, be subject to the two-hundred-dollar fee. Again, you did not file the business personal return. I do not think that was the intent, and I don't think it is really appropriate to say, "Oh, yes, you failed to file your two-hundred, your required annual return, but we're gonna give you the business personal exemption anyway."
All right, so your intent would be that there'd be the two-hundred fee plus-
They would be, they would not be granted the exemption, and they would also have, if there's a taxable value below twenty-five thousand dollars, they would receive a tax bill on that as well.
Is this something you're planning on putting into Borough Code as well?
This is, um, business personal is exempted by the Borough. Uh, the business personal tax is imposed by the City of Ketchikan. This is a change that would be required by the City of Ketchikan's code. Again, what we're looking at also on here too is, uh, twenty-five thousand, your current mill rate is six-point-seven, so, uh, hundred-and-fifty, hundred-and-sixty bucks maximum. And again, most of these accounts, that is also another strange thing I noticed is that the, a very, very substantial percentage of the eighty-nine that did not file were, in fact, the vast majority of these accounts, were accounts that if they'd have just filed the return, would not have, were well below the twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, total value, judging by whatever return, the latest return was we had looking back in the past, they're very small businesses. And, and again, in that case, if it is Joe's Landscaping that has a lawn mower and weed whacker, uh, they're not gonna have a taxable value. Um, you might have grand total of five, six-hundred dollars worth of value, and they'd only have to file once a month every fourth year. Alls we're asking is that they file that mandatory return once every four years.
All right, thank you very much.
We'll, um, take that and, uh, management review it, they'll bring it back to us.
I have one really fast question.
You bet.
The folks that have incurred the fines, did they fail to remember to file the following year?
Uh, well, that's what we're, uh, again, this is the first year that the filing fee has been in there.
You never not forget that.
Yeah, uh, many of the people that, uh, have come into my office, uh, especially those out-of-state, uh, were, uh, a lot of them tourist-related. I forgot to have my mail forwarded to me, you're right, I did not file my return. I've really had no grief from that aspect of it. Again, most of the more vociferous complaints were locally based. Thank you.
Larry? Thank you very much, Ron, for coming to us. All right, we'll have management review that, and, um, I imagine the district will add it and send it back into ordinance formers. That brings us down to seven-eight-two, exempting the procurement of replacement ambulance from bidding requirements, Bron Northwest. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, honor.
Go ahead.
Pursuant to sub-paragraph nine, section three, point one, two, point zero-five-zero A of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I'm with the city council exempting procurement of replacing ambulance for the competitive bidding written quotation requirement for the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and approved the purchase of a new vehicle from Bron Northwest of Chehalis, Washington at a cost not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight. Authorized funding from the fire department's twenty-thirteen medic number eleven replacement capital account and direct, the city managed to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Who didn't second it? Bobby, you have anything?
Um, this is kind of like a GSA deal where somebody has already gone out, done all the competitive bidding, and we're just partnering on and getting some purchase, right?
Yeah. Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passed you, and that says seven-zero, that brings us, we're missing three and four, so we're down to five. Discussion through the bypass posted speed limit, council member Bergeron.
Thank you. Um, I opened up the newspaper this morning, and there I was at the top of the fold. The only way I can take it for sure that it was a slow news paper.
It was.
My, my thoughts on this are, and then I do appreciate the chief and all the other folks laying in and taking a look at this. My personal observations were that I feel that it would be in the best interest of the public safety if we had a slower speed limit at that particular spot. And the reason I say that is, is that, um, you know, and I, I think I mentioned at the last meeting was, is that I was going down to Third Avenue bypass, and there was a very responsible young person, really young, really small. And, you know, there was cars going by at a lot faster than I'd care to see my kid at that age out there going by. And I think that, um, I think the, the, the use of that entire area has changed. And, you know, it really caused me to think about it too, was the folks from the daycare center, or it's not daycare, it's a preschool. Yeah, the Head Start thing is, is right there as well. And, uh, so there's a lot of little people that are out on that road. And, um, I think that we could do something, you know, I, I don't wanna take the entire bypass and make it like a twenty-mile-an-hour zone, but I would like to see, or have us consider, uh, taking the, uh, the school zone itself and move it up to include the library, or to have a speed limit that goes down further back. Um, and have, uh, I was talking to the public works director about this too, and he says, "You know, you can change the speed limit, it's not gonna do anything, they're still gonna go the same speed they've always went." And, you know, I believe that, I believe it's true, but he said, "The one thing," sorry if I'm quoting your cliff, "but the one thing that does work are those lines, those signs that have the radar thingy on it that says, 'This is your speed.'" I mean, we need to do something there. I mean, put up a post, drive carefully, something. Something to remind people, "The speed limit is twenty-five, if you guys are comfortable with that, I'm fine with that too." But I wanna do something that at least acknowledges that we're concerned about the public safety of, you know, I, I, and again, I'll, I'll drop back and, and say that the, the whole area has changed usage. I mean, formerly, it was a rock pit, and there was a big trucks going on, that's not happening anymore. There's commercial, there's a library there, there's a Head Start, and, uh, there's, there's a lot of, uh, young kids in that neighborhood, and we should produce something to protect them. And if anybody's interested in continuing this discussion on giving some direction to staff, then I would appreciate it.
Dan?
I live in that neighborhood, and I walk the bypass quite often. And I, I don't, I don't see a great many cars speeding. There's the occasional one, but I'm on that bypass a lot, and I, I really don't see it. But that's not to say it doesn't happen because there are kid marks, or whatever you call them, you know, all up and down the road. I had a conversation with a friend recently who was looking to buy a crotch rocket, and the kid selling it to him said, "Oh, I've gotten it up to a hundred-and-forty-nine miles an hour." And he said, "Where in the heck could you have done that at?" And he said, "Third Avenue bypass." Whether that's possible or not, I don't know, but, um, I don't really think in the whole scheme of things that it's, it's a huge issue. But then it only takes one incident, you know, to make it a bad situation. I, I don't know what the answer is in terms of that particular road, but I will say that in our communications, we had a, um, an email from, uh, Ken, is it Ken Ariola? And he, he doesn't think that that area is in need of any changes as well, but he does recommend that, that the police department and the city reassess the twenty-five-hundred to thirty-one-hundred block of Tongas. He says, with that three-lane, that people are using that as a, um, passing lane, so to speak, just to get one car ahead of the next one, I guess. I think in general that maybe this just opens up a conversation to a lot of different aspects of town that could be taken a look at. You know, the Head Start area is just over the hill from the bypass. I kind of tend to think people are slowing down by that point, but anything's possible. And now with the library there as well, you're going to get a lot more little people traffic around, but I personally have not witnessed a huge amount of problems with speeding.
I think the twenty-five starts right around by the library, the first sign.
Right.
I get slowed down by the second sign by the jail.
After you're done fixing, you look up, you know, there's daycare.
But, um, otherwise, I haven't, I haven't had, but I haven't seen a problem either, and they have a nice patrol up there where they sit, take radars.
I do see them up there often.
Anybody else want to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, just one, last thing, and the, and that is, I don't really even wanna take any action on this tonight. Unlike with the top of the fold of the newspaper, might as well do it, I just wanted to bring it up.
Can we say tomorrow?
I'll tell my friends on the council and see if there's any interest in doing something like that. And I, and I really haven't had a chance to do anything with it either. But I think what I'd like to do is, um, just not take any action tonight, and, um, I'll talk about it with some of the folks in the neighborhood and see if they're interested in doing anything, and seeing what some of the solutions might be with the public works director before I take up any more of our valuable time with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dimbaugh?
I was gonna ask a question, okay? Couldn't remember from our discussion a year ago about crosswalks. We have the crosswalk right across from the library, and is there one down below for the Head Start to use, right across the street? I can't remember.
Cliff Allen, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Yes, uh, we installed a new crosswalk at the Head Start location, and I'm struggling for that side street. Uh, and we're very, one of the bare valley side streets. We're very cautious about, uh, the proliferation of crosswalks out there. Um, there are some studies that indicate we have a higher crash rate where there's a marked crosswalk. Um, this one we went along with because they typically are, that one is typically used with adult supervision as they, they traverse to the library. And there really was no other alternatives, we picked that one for that reason.
Yeah, I guess my, I can see not doing it, and I, not, not changing the speed, that the only concern I would have is that that one crosswalk is, is in the thirty-five, and not even when people are supposed to be slowing down technically, unless a car is ahead of them slowing down.
The one at Forest?
The one at the library, yeah. And then it's also in the area where traffic is speeding up into a thirty-five, so. I can see where, and it's the only place to cross from a no-cross-walk side onto the crosswalk where a lot of people walking, so. It's, it's something we should probably consider. But I think Sam's right, it does warrant some additional discussion and, and a little more public input. But I think this does have merit for public safety.
Bob?
Yeah, Cliff, um, do you have any idea what those radar signs cost?
What is?
Tells you if you're speeding or not. I noticed down south on highways like Lakes and Mammoth, it's, it used to be posted forty-five or fifty, and now it's thirty-five. And every so often, they have those signs to remind people, because they do forget what the speed limit is and what they're doing.
You will quickly get into the thousands, the real cheap stationary ones that are solar activated. Don't smirk.
Yeah.
Uh, will run, I, I'm, and I'm guessing, in, in that four-to-six-thousand-dollar range, some of the higher ones that will store data so we can retrieve it for, for traffic studies, of course, will drive that cost up. We explored one where it came from, uh, it was to be mounted on, on items like street sweepers and sanding trucks, where they really had a good rate of effectiveness. Those were in the twenty and thirty-thousand-dollar range. Uh, there, there is one new device, and I'll be happy to research it for you. Out there, i- it's on a crosswalk, it's pedestrian-activated, it has little yellow strobes. Uh, we just got a report on that last week from Federal Highway that they have an incredibly high rate of effectiveness for, for drivers actually stopping for the crosswalk.
Well, I think I'd like to see some of the prices on that.
And, and we can certainly do that, just to move this forward. Uh, we can bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so there's no action on this item tonight, so we'll move on to item seven-eight-six, contract thirteen-twenty-eight Front Mill and Stedman Street Utility Design R and M Construction, Inc. of Anchorage. Do you have a motion? Go ahead.
I'm with the city council approved contract number thirteen-twenty-eight Front Mill Street, uh, Stedman Street Utility Design in amount of one-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-one. Between the City of Ketchikan and R and M Consultants, Inc., authorized funding amount of seventy-five thousand and seventy-five thousand respectively from the two thousand and thirteen wastewater and water division, Front and Mill Street Sewer Replacement Mill, uh, Streets Water Improvement Capital Account, and direct the city managed to execute the contract document on behalf of the city council.
Second. Who's in second, Bob?
Yeah, I think that we've already approved this, uh, at an earlier council meeting to do this, and I understand the state is gonna get into a large reconstruction of that particular project. And, and my concerns are, is that we make it very clear in the, in the contract that, uh, we're looking at, uh, the infrastructure and the fact of, do we need to replace it? Uh, I know that some of that stuff's been in the ground a long time, and the corrosion from saltwater is an issue. But if we're gonna be able to re-line things like the sewer line, can we put in, like I talked before about manholes for access and run that three-hundred feet or whatever, we can run those tubes in, uh, at a later date when we need to? Because my concern is this is a large capital project moving forward, and we have a lot of stuff on our plate already.
Sam?
Yeah, the other thing I was wondering about too, is not only about council members here, someone was talking about is what's, what are some of the design features? And what are some of the, are we gonna use, um, like, stuff that will last ninety years instead of what we got now? And, I mean, like, the new PVC pipes, and is that stuff gonna be specced out? Is that, are we going, what's the standard that we're going to and that kind of a thing? I'm interested to see what comes of that.
Thank you. Bob?
Also, I know that there's a lot of information in, or that needs to be gathered, and there's some, um, surveying that needs to be done. And the state of Alaska, uh, I guess this is a question for Cliff or whoever's gonna be on that project. They're already doing a tremendous amount of surveying on Mill Street when they go into this project. And I just wanna make sure, Seth, I guess, yeah, Seth, that we're not gonna be duplicating efforts if we can, if you notice on the state to do a lot of that stuff, and we utilize the information, that'd be awesome.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, uh, council members, Seth Brackey, Assistant Public Works Director. Bobby, you, you hit on a great point, uh, that's one of the reasons that, um, we went with this consultant. Uh, they have the contract with the state to do the base mapping as part of their project. So, we definitely hope to piggyback, and will piggyback on a lot of that work that's already been done. So, the surveying task that you see here is just specific to cleanup for any of those utility-specific items, so.
On that project, if I remember when we talked about it earlier on, the state would like us, whether we replace any of the subsurface infrastructure, they want us to do all the iron in the street also, right? They want us to pay for that?
Uh, that's typical, that's how we did, uh, Stedman, and, you know, it makes sense to replace that iron at that time, yeah.
But that's our iron and not necessarily the state's, so we end up-
Correct.
Is that all right? Thank you, Seth. Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to new business item seven-eight-seven, Public Education Program in Support Ballot Proposition, issuance of general obligation bonds to finance a portion of the cost of Ketchikan Medical Center. Twenty-five thousand, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm with the city council approved the transfer of twenty-five thousand from the appropriated reserve of the hospital. Sale tax funds to the Public Health Department, two thousand and thirteen advertising and public announcement account, account number six-zero-five-dash-zero-two, to fund the public education program in support of the ballot propositions to issue general obligation bonds in the amount of not to exceed forty-three million to finance a portion of the cost of the capital improvements to the Ketchikan Medical Center, and direct the city managed to expand up to twenty-five thousand to fund the preparation of such public education campaign.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Um, I've had Carl bring this before us, because, um, in the past, um, bond issues, we utilize that to get the information out to the voters. Um, Carl, how are we going to, who is going to do the, are we looking at doing this in-house? Or are we gonna be working with an outfit, and are we, and how, can we be closely working with the hospital?
We've already had, uh, meetings with representatives of the hospital, and yes, the intent is to do this in-house through our sales marketing and customer service division.
Great.
Both Mr. Cushing and Ms. Simpson have done previous ballot campaigns for us, and I anticipate doing it exactly the same way we did it for Whitman and the library and the fire station.
Thank you. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hello.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Hey, that passes six to one. That brings us down to seven A eight Deer Mountain Hatchery. What are we going to do with it?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
Before council gets into a discussion, I was advised of several issues from the city attorney this afternoon that you may want to be aware of before you begin your discussion, so.
Okay. Come on up, Mitch.
Thank you. As Carl mentioned, there's a couple of things that are probably worth pointing out before we go much further. One, I'm sure probably resolves itself as a technicality, but the entity that holds the title under the name of the city is actually the Ketchikan Tribal Hatchery Corporation. And the correspondence has been submitted from KIC from anything that I've seen. Also, since it won't be continuing as a hatchery, the city has a right to reenter the property and retake title to it. There should, at some point, I think, be an action by the councils, the governing body, to do that. There's also an associated easement that is, as far as I know, follow the same path as the property itself. I think it's a water line easement. My other observations that I, I shared with the manager is, assuming everybody's cooperating, cooperating, and I believe they are, the best thing would be to get a deed, just so the title goes up clear. And it's been long enough, it's been some fifteen years or so, it's probably worth getting a title for it, just to make sure that everything's taken care of. There's an issue that I've identified that, at least, I don't know that there's an answer or enough information to resolve it at this point, but there was a parcel that I understand KIC acquired and added to the parcel that has gone through the re-subdivision process. I'm uncertain what would be involved in backing that subdivision out. Part of it depends on the configuration and the size of the property and possibly anything else that KIC or some related entity might own in the area. I've talked some to Public Works about that, but it hasn't been chased down. It looks like a small lot standing alone. I at least don't see where it would have any access. Those are a couple of things that would need to get straightened out some way. Also, I don't know that we've been through it in any meaningful manner. There is, there was an agreement entered at the time of the deed and the easement that also obligates the grantee, which would be the Tribal Hatchery Corporation, to basically keep the place in good repair, need to do any remediation. I'm just spotting the issue. I don't know if that's a substantial concern or not. I just wanted to lay those out for the, for the council upfront, if those issues are out there. We'll be stepping through them as the council directs, I guess.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Carl? I imagine your office will deal with some of those things, I guess. My concern is, and I guess address the council, is do we want to keep it as a hatchery? Do you want to move forward on that, check with Sarah, or put an RFP out or whatever? I guess my only thoughts are, if we want to keep it going as a hatchery, which I'd like to look at, I guess the only area to talk to probably is Sarah. Carl, have you talked to anybody out there, or?
No, I have not, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I had a chance to talk to some of the hatchery folks over there. I walked through the park and talked to them. There's a, you know, all those tanks and everything have to be winterized. I think their guy is out on town right now on vacation, but they're going to have to come back, and before they're turned over, we have to get some kind of a program. And I believe when those tanks were originally put in there, I think the balance of the water is what keeps them from floating. So there's, there's some issues there, because it ran all winter long, so you didn't worry about winterization. And I do believe that we still have a problem with the water line in Fair Street. I think that there's a leak in that, and if we shut the valve off, it may bubble up someplace, up the road someplace, so I, there are a lot of issues. The one gal that was in there doing the books had the heat on, just hot. So I happened to talk to Steven, said maybe you should go over and see if you can turn the heat down. Somebody's going to have to pay for heat in that place, and I don't know who it is.
That's ironic, Councilmember Severson, because when I did my walkthrough, we were advised by John Brown that the facilities had minimal heat, if any.
But those are all issues that have to be hammered out on a time of day, yeah. When they vacate it, we're, we're going to have to step in and be able to take care of it, so.
My only questions for the council is, do you guys want to pursue keeping this going as a hatchery? Or you just want to shut the door? I guess input, Bob?
Well, I would make the recommendation that we put an RFP out to see if anybody's interested in running it as a hatchery as a first step. We get no applications in that pretty well. Tell us what our next step's going to be.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody else want to discuss it? Marty?
I would like to see Sarah directly contacted and have discussions with them. It seems like they would be the most likely ones to respond to an RFP anyway. And before we go through a whole RFP process, if they're not going to be engaged in it, it might not be a very worthwhile option.
Anything else, Matt?
My only, one of the other concerns I have is even if we have another entity come in and run it, that it might, since the majority of the concern, if they have the fish there, it was tourism-related, it might also be who wants to look at the museum department and see if we can include part of this facility in the museum department to display and educate the tourists on the fishing and fishing fleet and the fishing programs that we have in southeast. So I think it's more than just an RFP for hatcheries. I think we also need to look at it as public education.
Anybody else? Marty?
Yeah, I actually have a question. Mr. Lieberman was talking about that he really wanted to see fish continue in the stream. It's my understanding that there will, it still is the salmon stream, there will still be fish in the stream, that they just won't be kings. Is that correct?
Well, I know we have a king return now, and we'll always have the humpies. I just don't know how king can wear out of those, where out of what?
I mean, the horse could still see fish in the stream if a horse comes to the horse.
They're doing the kings that come in May and June, so.
Anybody else? Right now, we have a motion to go out for an RFP. Call the roll. Go ahead.
I amend that.
You can amend it if you want.
Along Marty's suggestion in terms of contacting Sarah first, and then if there isn't any interest in that respect.
Bob?
I think you still have the University of Alaska, even though they moved down to the present campus into the Sitka Science Center. Even the Sitka Science Center might be interested in, and I think we limited ourselves if we don't at least ask if there's somebody out there that, that has an interest.
Agreed, Bob. We're out there, so yeah. All right, call the roll.
Are we voting on the amendment?
We're, no, there is no amendment.
Because there was no second, so, okay. Bergeron?
This is for the RFP.
RFP. Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
West?
No.
Hey, that passes six to one. That brings us down to KPU. Apologize, I meant to have number two on the consent agenda, I forgot. That brings us down to number one ordinance, master service agreement between the city of Ketchikan, KPU, and City West Cable and Telephone, Inc., first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple, just quick questions for Carl on that last one before you went in.
Oh, you bet.
Suggestions from Mitch, are you going to go, in understanding that you're going to be looking at deed and all that stuff?
Yeah, we'll have to get together and pursue those with KIC and the Tribal Hatchery.
Just making sure.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we're back to master service agreement between the city, Ketchikan, KPU, City West, Cable. Do we have a motion, please? Seven B one. Go ahead.
I move the city council approve in first reading ordinance number seventeen, or thirteen, seventeen thirty, approving a master services agreement between the city of Ketchikan, VBA Ketchikan Public Utilities, and City West Cable and Telephone Corp., providing for the filing of a referendum petition and establishing an effective date.
Second. Moved in second. Marty, do you want to add anything?
I don't. I'm about to lose my voice, so someone else could speak to it, that'd be good.
Well, I think this is part of our plan where we're getting a backup through City West, through Prince Rupert. I'll get our internet down to, or 4G down to Washington if we need it, correct, Carl?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And part of that overall plan that we've gone over with Mr. Cushing. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Harris?
Hi.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hey, that brings us down to contract twelve twenty-nine, change order three Whitman Lake Hydro Project General Construction, Dawson Construction. I think it's for about thirteen thou, no, one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Do we have a motion? Yeah, go ahead.
I move city council approve change order number three in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and four cents to contract number twelve twenty-nine Whitman Lake Hydro Project General Construction between the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities and Dawson Construction, authorizing funding from the electric division. Whitman Lake Hydro Project Capital Account and direct the general manager to execute the change order on behalf of the city council.
Moved in second. Bob, do you want to add anything?
No, and I, I, I think this is a good idea to get the power lines and everything that we're doing there taken care of.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right. That brings us down to vouchers from the Daily News, one thousand, eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of the vouchers of the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one thousand, eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to managers' report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. That, only thing I had a question, I think we talked about it, number seven, that proposed revision of the community capital projects procedure. What did we decide to do today or talk about, if you remember?
Well, what was brought up was that basically that the borough would take over the process, in my understanding.
Correct.
I don't disagree, I disagree with that philosophy. In talking to Doug Ward, he thought there might be a process where we could evaluate these projects for the veterans of the community, and he was going to make a proposal, so I think he would have just made the kind of a proposal that Doug Ward brings up. And we might be able to involve other business members in the community in the process and actually have them, be a community-wide process and just something that, I'll call it, local politics.
Thanks for refreshing me. I just, I couldn't remember what we talked about, so we came up with. All right, nothing else on the managers' report. Anybody have any questions on any of them?
No, but I'd like to thank the manager's office for the lay on the table in regards to the Whitman Dam access construction, landslide and, and the project going on up there. I had some concerns and expressed them to Carl. He got with staff, and they put a real good report together, helped me to gain a little more measure of confidence in where we're going with this. I'm concerned about time and money, of course, as these projects move forward. And I just think keeping an eye on them, and it sounds like everything is going to work out for the best. But I just hate surprises, I guess, at this point. That's a marginal project that it is. There are going to be issues, I understand that. But thank you.
Great. City clerks filed?
None, Your Honor.
City attorneys filed? Future agenda items? Mayor and council comments? You bet.
Future agenda items?
Yes.
We talked about a couple of things. One, a budget session.
Yep, I could bring that up here as my comments.
Okay.
Dick, you want to start us off?
Yeah, two, I guess one's a comment and one will be a question, since it wasn't anywhere else. Comment is, is I think the city needs to prepare comments to the state on the Greena Access project. Probably everybody knows what my preference is, but I prepared a comment that says that a bridge needs to get built. Plan, I don't know, but we need to do something.
They're going to have that Wednesday?
August fifteenth or somewhere along, and everyone's due.
Now, but Wednesday, the seventeenth, open house here in town.
Yeah, so we can just paint in that, and then we need to put together a comment from the city.
I agree.
The other comment or question I have is really probably the telecom people is, is two-fold. Probably one, what happened on Saturday to the television and the telephones, because there's a lot of people was without television and things, and it hasn't been out in the public yet. And then I've had a number of people comment about problems with their TV service, and they don't get anywhere when they call for help. So if somebody wants to ask me, I can send them to the people and ask a question. It seems to be a problem, and maybe it's all new technologies. But Saturday was particularly, it hit telephones, and it hit TV, and it hit the internet.
We shall get the right guy.
I will get you the answers, Councilmember Kuz. I was not aware of any outages on Saturday, so I will definitely look into it.
Yeah, Saturday morning, it was, it was done for a while. I don't know.
All right, Sam?
No comment, Your Honor.
Yeah. Matt?
Yeah, my only comment has to do with the process that we're looking at for the capital project last night. I commend the city folks that showed up saying that we, we needed to be included in that, because I, I don't agree with the submissions all going to the borough as well and for their total approval, but I think a lot of this can just be if people are willing to sit around the table and discuss items and then vote on them rather than digging their heels and, and not being able to have a, a good public discussion about objects and, and look at them in a manner that, that we can look at them as a whole.
Thank you. Bob?
Talked about the legislative process for projects going north. The system we had last year didn't work. I think there's unfair representation on that committee, and we're trying to move projects. When it came to the governor's budget, it got all haywire. A lot of hard feelings, a lot of, like you say, people digging in their heels, and the process needs to be changed. I think the adjustment needs to go back to the way it was, and I don't know if that's entirely the way to go either, but I do know that there needs to be a change to that. And as Dick talked about the utility outage, my TV and telephone went off at eleven o'clock at night, and technicians don't come in to KPU on, I think it was a Sunday, until eleven o'clock. So there was a twelve-hour outage that included the telephone, internet, and TV. And they had technicians come in and start to work on it. And I think by one o'clock or so, I think I was, the TV, things came back on, they called me back after I talked. I've had pretty good luck talking to customer service and staff. The problem is, is I still think we have equipment that we have issues with, because I still don't have staple TVs.
All right, KJ?
Two things. Number one was just that special meeting that Dick was talking about.
We'll talk about in a minute.
You got that coming. The other thing I want everybody to think about, couple of days, remember how pretty it was outside and just gorgeous weather? When the tourists come back here and ask, just remind them, you live here. This is the greatest place I've ever lived in my life. That's all.
Thank you. Marty?
I'll agree with KJ, and that'll lead into some of my, what I have to say.
Well, I've had requests for a budget, pre-budget workshop or meeting. I was wondering, is everybody available for next Thursday, July twenty-fifth? I know it's summer and people have got places, don't people?
Tuesday.
Wednesday? Next Thursday, I mean, I'm next Thursday after our next meeting, the twenty-fifth of July. Okay, let's make that our budget meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
That, that's fine, but staff will not have anything prepared for you, so it will be a free-wheeling.
It's going to be a free-wheeling. Everybody can put their stuff. I don't, unless we have some free things you guys want from management that you want to get to them right away or get some information for.
I just think we want to talk.
We want to talk. We can let everybody out, talk to management, tell them what we're looking at, coming near, and, you know, have some things I want to bring up, so. Make your lists, okay?
I would just ask, we have projected revenues based on the new mill rate. That's new to the thinking for the budget process.
And if you have anything else, get it to them early so we can get some, if you have that information. All right, also, I wanted to start in on evaluations too, because I'm about a year behind. All right, also, I wanted to start in on, um, evaluations too, because I'm about a year behind. Um, Carl, when do you leave town? But come back. I know you're going on vacation.
Mr. Mayor, I will not be at work, um, beginning, uh, August seventeen.
August seventeen? Okay. All right, um, I'm thinking, all right, and this is going to be tentative since I'm not positive, but I'd like to do at least two evaluations on August eighth. And, oh, as we get closer to that, I will, um, we're gonna put that down as tentative and I'll keep talking to them. And we'll do the, um, let's do Carl and let's do the city attorney first. Um, the capital list, um, Dick's already brought that up. We'll see what, um, Doug comes up with and we can all put input on that. Um, hopefully get a, um, real, um, good process and everybody get their input in, um, have a list that's, um, reflective of our top needs within the community. Um, Dick brought up the Gravina Access. I do think, um, we need to get our, and also I was going to ask if council wants to, um, get some, uh, something on, um, official resolution to that, and I think we should. Um, I'll make sure I'm up there on Wednesday on the seventeenth to go through their open house and we can talk about, um, I'll make sure there's something on an agenda, um, before the, um, at least by the, let's see, the seventeenth, so the first meeting in August, uh, we should be talking about, um, what kind of comments we want. We might not pass anything there, but at least we can have it on there to talk about, um, what direction we want to give as a council and let's hear what everybody has to say. We might not all agree on the same thing, but if we can get something passed by the fifteenth, that'd be great. And, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
One quick question on that is, is that, I, I understood at one point that there was some money appropriated from the feds to the state. I mean, it'd be nice to know what money is out there, what's available for funding on this thing, if anything. It might give us an idea about what we want and, you know, what kind of get this up before that might actually get done.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I've not kept up. I'm not sure of the issue you're talking about. Can you repeat it?
Comments on the, um, access, Gravina access? And, um, they're having that seventeenth of July, they're having that open house, and then I'd like, um, on the, um, eighteenth of July, I'd like at least something on the agenda where we're talking about what we might be interested in doing. I mean, not the eighteenth of July, the first meeting in August. And hopefully we can give some direction to you to put something together for the second meeting in August for date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Sam asked about what's been given from the state and so forth on, uh, the Gravina project and, uh, Peggy Wilson sent myself and I, the manager, the borough manager, a, a complete spreadsheet on it. I think that one of us can have it worked forward if everybody.
That'd be great.
That way, quite more than you ever wanted to know, but.
Can you get that to us, Dick?
I can send it to your, Carl.
Oh, okay.
And the last one at least, um, at our meeting with the borough, um, proper relations meeting, um, the fire department dispatch, um, they went out and found out they can get their dispatch for sixteen thousand something, um, which I have, I was hoping that we give direction here from the council, have our manager get back to them and say, hey, we'll offer the services for the equal fee and see if we can get something decided on and done. If there's four hands to do that, great. There isn't.
What was this on again?
The, um.
I'm not tracking.
Fire, um, dispatch for North and South Thomas.
I guess my question is, is they can give us that chief, why are we not giving them that chief?
They can't get it that cheap.
All I just wanted, we, um, have asked them, you know, for money to contribute. Um, if you want, we can have management call and find out if that's what they're really getting, chief or not, but, um, I have no problem, um, going with that. Bob?
That sixteen thousand dollars doesn't cover the operation completely for whoever's going to supply it. Just an additional, um, duty that, that's what we're going to charge it for. We own the system. Whoever's supplying the sixteen thousand dollar service to the borough owns their own system. Sixteen thousand dollars. Not going to cover the cost.
Sam, do you have something else?
So, we were asking originally for how much? One eighty?
Well, actually, what we put to you at the last council meeting was a proposal from the borough manager that would have equated based on two thousand and twelve numbers, about fourteen thousand, seven hundred.
Sure. So, wouldn't, I thought if, uh, they, we come back and they fund like maybe like the equivalent of one FTE for this operation, which would be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand.
I, I don't think they'll agree. Uh, and I, I understand Dan's rationale. If he can contract with a vendor up north for the service for sixteen thousand dollars a year, I'd be recommending the same thing if I were in the industry.
Yeah, but that's, if, if you don't mind, Carl, my, my understanding of that was that there's a whole lot of other infrastructure, expensive infrastructure that requires maintenance beyond that dollar amount to go into place for that. So, I, I.
Well, instead of debating it now, let's make it now an agenda item for the next meeting.
Was that sixteen thousand each entity?
Total. Go ahead, Bob. I mean, Dick?
I, I've got a question. If the borough contracts for that outside this city, what happens to the nine-one-one charges off the people that are paying it and KPU gets it? Do we lose it or do we hang on to it? Because that's going to cost us a whole lot of money. I don't know the techni- it may be a technical question. I don't have a clue.
Well, we'll find out. Let's make it an agenda item instead of just.
Mr. Mayor, this may not come back at the meeting of the eighteenth. Uh, I have to get the agenda done this week.
That's it. Put it on the next one. We're not going anywhere.
I can't tell you how disappointed I'm going to hear that.
All right, um, that's everything I had. Uh, that brings us down to executive session. We have one, fifteen A one, request for executive session, discussion of lawsuit filed about Miller Construction.
Two.
Now, the second one, we approved that motion, I mean, that thing already, so we don't have to do it. And regarding the termination of contract eleven twenty-one Jackson Road Street, Fourth and Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Project. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move the city council to declare that it is in the best interest of the city going to executive session in accordance with KMP two point zero four point zero two five A one and AS four four six two three one zero C one and three to discuss Miller Construction Company Limited's lawsuit regarding termination of contract number eleven dash twenty-one Jackson Road Street and Fourth and Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Project, case number IK E dash twelve dash zero zero four one six CL. Uh, S R C I, excuse me, has set forth in the company's complaint dated August twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, which includes the needs to discuss subjects and knowledge of which could have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and discuss potential litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege.
We have a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
West?
Yes.
Yeah, the pass is six to one. We have five. Here and, um, let's just finish up.
That's okay.
Dick, once we do that, we can adjourn our guard.
Go ahead.